Some of the issues that are affecting our residents. In this day, today, we're talking about housing insecurity. This is the first again of many major legislative packages of the new council. And what we know is that with all the stresses that come about with COVID, the typical stress in a resident's life, be it with mass transit, be it with schooling, be it with all the systemic issues that have plagued our city far too long, that the last thing you need to worry about is where you're going to rest your head at at night. And what we're here to do is to provide some additional cover, some immediate relief, and I'm excited about this package. At our meeting today, the council will introduce the COVID Housing Relief Package, a sweeping legislative response to a housing crisis. The bills will stop landlords from evicting people without just cause when their lease expires, help renters afford moving expenses by requiring landlords to give tenants more options to pay their security deposits, limit the late fee landlords can charge on rent when tenants receive public assistance, and help people avoid tax sale by allowing them to make payments year long. These bills are real-time solutions again to those problems that are facing many Baltimoreans. And we take this instance of this bill to stop landlords from evicting people without just cause when their lease expires. During this pandemic, we've discovered landlords found a loophole to get around the eviction moratorium at an alarming rate, not just here but statewide and countrywide. The moratorium was supposed to apply to tenants who could prove that they missed their rent based off of the public health crisis. As we understand and know where our unemployment stands, we also know the trouble that our state has had in providing unemployed benefits to our residents. But landlords have found a legal maneuver to get around the eviction ban. And they've waited until the lease expires, and then they ultimately do not renew the lease, which in terms of these current conditions, an eviction. We're now nearing the end of the pandemic, which is almost a year come March. And we know that the the increase of this type of lease renewals or lack thereof will continue to occur and continue to affect Baltimore city residents. With that said, we've seen recent reports that says that these types of evictions have increased by 82% in 2020 alone. And again, with the expectation of that the year-long crisis around the COVID pandemic, that these year-long leases will discontinue. And unfortunately, we expect a huge increase. So that's why we're working urgently to provide legislative solutions for this critical problem, so many others who are facing this in our city can provide relief. Today's bill introduction is just the start to that. The bills will receive hearings to evaluate the problems they're designed to solve as part of the council's newly improved committee process. We've got the backing and support of leading housing advocates. You'll hear from them today. The one thing I'm gonna ask everybody is please follow this legislation, follow the results in the resolution of this legislation. We're asking folks utilizing social media to use the hashtag #BeMoreHousingRelief. Together, we will help more families build a strong foundation during these trying times. It's important for us to create a safe, stable, as well as secure home for our most needed residents. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Zaffer Shah, Attorney of the Public Justice Center.
Can you say your name and spell it?
Thank you, Council President Mosby, for having me here. My name is Zaffer Shah. That's Z-A-F-A-R-S-H-A-H, Attorney in the Human Rights to Housing Project at the Public Justice Center, which is a nonprofit civil legal aid organization. We provide legal assistance and representation to over 600 Baltimore residents every year to prevent eviction and secure better housing conditions. This legislative package is hugely important. There's no doubt about that if you talk to any renter in Baltimore city. And right now, where we're standing in Collington Square Park, we actually stand in a high-risk eviction zone, meaning that the eviction, the threat and risk of eviction right here is two and a half times the city's average. And one block over eastward is an extreme eviction risk zone, meaning that the threat and risk of eviction there is three and a half times higher than the city average based on a study from 2019. And so we know that the protections that the council president's package is putting forth truly matter to the communities most impacted by COVID-19 over the past 10 months. People of color have been disproportionately impacted in their employment, in their education, and in their housing. While so many households have applied for rental assistance, they've called, they've waited, the city has seen an average of over 130 households evicted each month since August, between August and November. And many more households were likely forced out of their housing not through the judicial court process but by the threat and intimidation of notices of nonrenewal and lease terminations during the pandemic. So COVID-19 has made very clear that the entrenchment of eviction in this community that stretches outward east and west like wings overlapping with what we rulefully know as the black butterfly. Housing insecurity remains a roadblock to public health solutions to this crisis. We're at an urgent point where lawmakers must act to prevent evictions amid the pandemic, but also must begin to change the actual systems for the long term to ensure that the city is giving residents the best chance to stay here, to work here, and to thrive here. And the council, the council president's package of renter protections is a much-needed jumpstart to meeting this crucial challenge. The Public Justice Center looks forward to working with the council president closely on these bills and with Chairwoman Middleton and the rest of the city council. Thank you.
We all know the important work that the Public Justice Center provides, so very thankful for your leadership as well as your support. Next up, we're going to hear from the council members. We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter up from the 10th District. She's currently working on legislation that ties the outcomes associated with housing, the outcomes associated with health. So she's here to support her colleagues, and we thank her for coming up. First up, we're going to have Council Vice President Middleton. She's the sponsor of the Alternative to Security Deposits Bill.
Councilwoman, can you say your name and spell it?
Pardon?
Say your name and spell it.
Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, There is hope on the horizon for our city. Policy changes are where real solutions happen. The economy has pushed issues of housing to the forefront of our conversations, breaking old unfair barriers. Time to embed equity. Updating old 20th century housing policies is an excellent beginning. We must help, give guidance, and implement meaningful incentives now. Many households, single mothers, and in particular, our Black and Brown communities, continue to struggle in making ends meet even more so through this pandemic, living paycheck to paycheck or no paycheck at all. We must work to increase the number of children and families who live in healthy and hazard-free homes in our city. This package will be a breakthrough of the tale of two cities. I wholeheartedly stand with my colleagues and our council president in support of this housing package. I'm even more excited about introducing this bill on an alternative to security deposits. The security deposit is your money. In a nutshell, a security deposit is any money you pay upfront to the landlord other than one month's rent, and it is your money to get back after you leave minus only reasonable amounts for cleaning, repairs of damage that you cause in rent. This ordinance is requiring the landlord of 10 or more units to implement ways to spread out payment. This bill should encourage landlords to take a closer look at their planning and develop strategies facing housing instability. This is an easy start to overcome systematic effects of racism within housing policy and practices. They've already started this procedure in places in Virginia, Atlanta, Cincinnati, Prince George's County, and Montgomery County. The place we call home connects to a myriad of other factors determining life's outcomes. So I'm excited about this bill and the other bills and looking forward to the hearings on these bills. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we are going to bring up the council person, whose district we currently stand in, and that's Councilman Tony Glover. Tony, come up.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you all for coming out, and thanks to my colleagues for joining me here.
Can you say your name and spell it?
Excuse me? Antonio Glover, A-N-T-O-N-I-O-G-L-O-V-E-R. Thank you. No families should be worried about losing their homes in the midst of a global pandemic. COVID virus has surged and people are dying. Businesses are closing because residents are losing their jobs. Landlords still fail to find ways to evict these people despite the state and federal ban. It is uncontrollable. The council is working to stop this. My bill will require landlords to provide just cause before they can evict someone. Just cause being landlords must prove in the court that the renters took action to deserve evictions by damaging property, illegal activity, disorderly conduct, and things of such. The legislation will protect these people that have been hurt from this pandemic. I've heard so many stories of people who are badly held and on, that are badly making it, one paycheck away from losing their homes. Maybe this has been laid off because the businesses are closing. Maybe they lost their job or earnings because they got COVID or they're trying to help the loved one who had COVID-19. This is our job as the council to protect and protect, excuse me, to protect our families here in Baltimore. I am proud to sponsor this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Next up, we're going to have Councilman Stokes. He's going to hear talk about his bill, the Late Fee Grace Period Bill.
Good morning. My colleagues, council president, Vice President, this bill, part of this bill, Councilman Robert Stokes, part of this bill is to provide, ensure people who receiving public assistance, actually what happens is a lot of people who receive public assistance, they get evictions before they receive their benefits. Part of this bill ensures that they receive their benefits before their rent is due, and it has a 10-day grace period. Right now, there's five. As you know, people because of COVID-19 and the pandemic, that's been happening in public assistance all throughout the city, especially in my district. I have three, Latrell, Douglas, and Perkins. And we've been receiving all kinds of emails because people have been getting eviction notice because they don't get their benefits till after their rent is due. So this bill protects them, and it also gives them a 10-day grace period. Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, an advocate on this issue for quite some time, we're going to have Odette Ramos, Councilwoman from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm Odette Ramos, O-D-E-T-T-E-R-A-M-O-S. Thank you to all of my colleagues for supporting this. My two pieces of legislation being introduced this evening is to work to prevent people from going into predatory tax sale. And I say it predatory because what happens is that if someone is late on their taxes or doesn't pay their taxes, they go into what's called tax sale where the lien is sold to an investor, and then that person goes back to the homeowner and asks them to pay it back with 12 or 18% interest. So that somebody who's already paid off their mortgage likely falls into this category, and it might be your grandmom. It might be your great uncle. It's somebody who may have forgotten to pay taxes or had to make a decision between a medical and emergency and paying their taxes. And so what my bill does is avoid all of that by allowing for residents who do not any longer have a mortgage to pay that amount monthly. My other bill allows for anyone who is behind on taxes to go into a payment plan. Right now, in Baltimore, we don't have either of those. It has been a crusade of mine as a community development advocate for a long time to address this tax sale issue, and these two bills move forward in that direction. I want to thank the advocates that have been working on this for a long time, NVLS, NHS, and several others that are here. We're going to move in this direction. What this also does is stabilize our families, making sure that those residents who don't have mortgages are able to be stable in their homes and also stabilize our neighborhoods. So I appreciate the opportunity to have our bills as part of this comprehensive package because we have to protect our homeowners and our renters during this crisis and beyond. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you colleagues for all of your support. I also want to thank the agencies working with us on this, and Department of Finance and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Next up, in this order, we're going to have Dr. Gary Rodwell from the Coppin Heights CDC, as well as Dan Ellis from Neighborhood Housing Services, both speaking on in support of Councilwoman Ramos's bill. So, Brother Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I am Dr. Gary Rodwell, G-A-R-Y-R-O-D-W-E-L. And thank you, council persons. I am here on behalf of the Coppin Heights Community Development Corporation. We are based in West Baltimore, 17 churches and 17 community organizations. So you may wonder, why am I here? Well, I'm here on behalf of our organization for two reasons. One is because we have worked with Councilwoman Odette Ramos over the years on these types of bills. We also want to support the comprehensive way in which the council president and others are approaching this. Specifically, we are here to support Councilwoman Ramos's bill. It is a bill that, as she just so aptly put, supports the legislation that will bring people who have paid off their homes for their taxes monthly and not semiannually. It'll give them that opportunity to do it on a monthly basis as opposed to having that amount of money build up over a time period. It also helps us stabilize our neighborhoods by ensuring that our seniors, and we have many in West Baltimore, the largest number of our homeownership is by seniors. It gives them the opportunity to avoid tax sale. Many times, we've heard that people have gotten a tax bill, and then when they go down and try to pay that tax bill off, there's actually an additional tax bill because they actually make you pay it forward, which increases the chance and likelihood that you will lose your home. So we have been doing this work in West Baltimore. We will continue to be a part of the process. Again, we applaud everyone for their comprehensive efforts, and we will be together.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Ellis, Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, So on behalf of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, we would like to express our thanks to Council President Mosby and Councilwoman Ramos for their leadership on this issue. Tax sale is an issue that has been impacting our communities in Baltimore for many, many, many years. And typically, it impacts low and minority communities at a much higher rate than other parts of the city. The legislation that's been proposed helps residents to remain in their homes. What currently happens with tax sale is if somebody has a tax bill of $750 that has not been paid, and it goes to tax sale, the debt is sold to some out-of-town investor who then adds on an interest rate up to 18% and then adds fees on that add up to thousands of dollars. And within a year of that debt being sold, the bill becomes more than $2,000 in a typical tax sale situation, plus a 12% to 18% interest rate. What the bill that Councilwoman Ramos has proposed does is allow residents to make payments at a manageable rate over time. So the city still gets paid, but you don't need to use a debt collector to do that. And so that allows for the resident to remain in their home for the long term. This helps with housing security because the less people who end up in distressed housing situations because of tax sale and higher bills, the more stable our communities are. The people who are typically impacted by tax sale are the longstanding residents of our community, often seniors who have paid off their home or people who inherited their home from a family member who had paid off the home prior to. And so these residents are the pillars of our community who have grown up here, have lived here, have invested in our communities. And so the city providing the permission to say you can make payments that are affordable to you over time, to not have us sell your debt, is something that makes a lot of sense and is a win for everybody in the entire city. So we applaud the efforts of the council to help address the issues of housing insecurity. And we look forward to working together with Councilwoman Ramos and her colleagues moving forward to address these issues. Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll take any questions or concerns.
I got first word. I mean, both of you, Ms. Ramos. And you can get in front of me.
Okay.
Trying to keep up distance.
Right, right. We're trying to do distance here.
You have obviously been out here a while advocating this stuff.
Yeah.
And I heard that you said, you know, with the tax sales and all the above. But is that moving forward towards water bills? And the, I can't remember the, anyway, does this including other things?
Sure. So the first bill about paying your taxes monthly ahead of time instead of twice is for property taxes only, okay? There is a lot of other legislation that addresses the water bill issue, and I would imagine there's going to be even more around that issue once the council gets a hold of and works with the OIG and DPW on addressing all of the things that came out of the recent OIG report, okay? So that first bill is just about property taxes. The second one about if you're in arrears for your bills and you can pay in installments and a payment plan is for property taxes and liens. Again, we're going to address the water bill issue in a comprehensive way relative to the comprehensive reforms we need for water billing and the whole water billing system.
And one of the other things, a lot of homes have ground rent.
Yeah.
People don't understand the destiny too.
Yeah, these bills don't address ground rent, but that's on the list.
But just to be clear, the Maryland General Assembly, my bill, we passed the bill that put moratoriums on city, putting properties in tax sale liens solely based off of water bills. So no longer is that allowed based off of legislation that we passed two years ago.
So this whole plan is a comprehensive, starting here, moving here, moving here.
That's right.
And that keeps the residents in the area? Because a lot of time when people aren't able to move out and investors don't improve the property, now you've got a bunch of naked homes.
Correct. We want homeownerships. We want folks who live in these communities because we know they take pride in these communities. That's how we build stronger communities. That's how we have a stronger city. And that's exactly what this package does, particularly during a time where people are facing unprecedented challenges during this crisis.
Council President, yes. Do you know how many people or how many landlords were taking advantage of this loophole? And do you expect to get pushback from that community of landlords?
I do not have the exact number. I know it was reported in the Baltimore Sun that it was an 82% increase of these types of evictions during this time period. We know that there hasn't been a more vulnerable time in my life. So to imagine that, you know, we're having an increase of folks that are being pushed out, forced to find new housing, you know, just exacerbates all of the concerns and problems that we currently have in our city. So no, I don't have the exact number, but that Baltimore Sun article pointed out to about 82% increase.
How would your plan work to stop that process? I haven't seen your bill yet.
The bill regarding just cause? So we're working with a preemption issue with the state that we want to work through, but the idea is from a perspective of someone that that a landlord cannot renew a lease solely based off of whatever reason. They have to have a formal reason. And that reason can't be tied to someone's inability to pay rent knowing that we're in the midst of a crisis and that there's been a doctrine that says during the public health crisis, you cannot evict someone based off of that measure. So it would have to be something like illegal activity or something else that, you know, the bill will kind of lay out. I believe this would be the first in the state of the just cause, and we think this is really important, especially knowing the current state that our residents have been placed in.
Not to take away from this legislation, I just want to ask you, is there any?
Is it specific to this legislation, or is it specific to the package?
It's not.
Okay, we can wait.
Okay, absolutely. No problem.
Are there any other questions associated with the package? Okay, yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask you if there's any update on the analyst positions within your office? And also ask you with residents and restaurants, you know, right now still shut down in the city, if the city, you know, would be better off spending some of that $700,000 proposed money on relief for some of these businesses?
Yeah, no update at the moment. I think what's really important to note that, you know, our city residents, particularly in this time of financial concerns, we need to be doing our due diligence with legislation that's coming out, having real financial oversight, having real financial analysis. Unfortunately, this is something that's specific to Baltimore. It makes Baltimore extremely unique. You go to every other legislative body of any major city, you go right down to Annapolis, or you go to our federal government. This is the way good government operates. This is really important for us. And I would say now when we're trying to tighten up our belts, it's more importantly that we're scrutinizing proposals as well as past legislation associated with the scarcity of resources that we have currently today. So the idea is that this will actually pay for itself by ensuring that we get in front of bills that come with unintended consequences and put unfair mandates on limited city resources.
Thank you.
So real quick, if you were just going to say something at the end of all this to the residents or stretch with a thousand things, are you trying to say help is on the way? You don't have to. We got your back. I mean, what did you want to say?
I would say that this is the council's first swing at developing a legislative package that directly goes to some of the core issues that our residents are faced on a daily basis. So if you're a renter and you've been struggling to try to work your way through these issues, if you're a homeowner who has been struggling to try to understand and know how you're going to stay and keep your home, that this is that first incremental step of the council really going after this and ensuring that we get in front of this.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You want to go chat with the van?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah.